Bargaining where doing so in open session would be detrimental to the board's decision. And I'm also making a note that this meeting is being videotaped. So Rick, can you act as timekeeper and try to like, I'd really like to try to stick to these times of course?
I will be very real with you.
Okay, that'd be great. And I know I mentioned this to the board before because I know that we have substantive discussions to have tonight. So with that, can we take a look at the minutes? Were there any comments to last minute?
I did see one typo in the section seven. I think we assigned Rick and Liz twice to work on the family survey. I thought once probably enough.
Section seven.
So the bottom of the second paragraph and then the fourth paragraph. Or maybe not.
No, right, it's actually the second paragraph and then the third, middle of the third paragraph.
Yeah.
So the committee, the first one is that the committee recommended that the house was reestablished. And the second is the chair actually assigned them to the house.
Okay. Awesome. Stand corrected.
If there are no other questions, I'm just going to take a motion to the first minute.
I don't know if we all, sorry, I don't know if you can do this. I think that I'm going to make an objection.
Anyone would like to second Jess's motion? Okay, got it. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nice. So motion passed without delay. All right. Can we go directly to the parent rep update and I'll check and see if there's further comments?
Oh, sorry. Liz, you go ahead. Yeah. Okay, sorry. So the only thing, well, I have a few things, I guess. I heard from between 20 and 30 parents regarding the survey and it was not well received. The one thing, the one positive, I will say, that came through was that the teachers continued to do amazing work and that was mentioned by more than one person. So that's on the positive side. As far as some of the comments of concern were that they felt that it was probably a waste of time and money, that students, families' experience may be different if you have multiple children, especially between the middle school and upper school. So the survey, just answering at once, made it difficult. It was solely focused on education but nothing on the experience with the school. The questions left too much open to interpretation and this is going to make analysis and any follow-on actions more difficult. The rating scales were skewed. There was typically only one negative answer and multiple positive answers, which made it, makes it more difficult. So that was with regards to the survey. I also did receive a question in terms of what the, what steps the board is taking to deal with some of the fraudulent admittance issues that we had last year. I know that, I believe the current complaint is, is in the hands of DEES, but they would like to understand what's going on there. And then also, there was just a question around resources for extracurriculars and whether or not we have enough resources for the extracurricular activities. And I did direct this person back to the chair of the appropriate committee. And that's it for parent updates.
Okay, great. We'll be talking about the family survey in the report. The, I just make a comment on the, what the board is doing on the enrollment issue. That really is in the hands of the school right now. There is an open complaint about it, which we'll update on. And then if resources will hopefully be covered somewhat in budget as well today. Jess, faculty update?
All right. My glasses are here, but I'm going to start with some good news anyways. I, we had a few weeks ago, a, an election among the faculty for my replacement. I know you're all weeping, but I will be leaving. But Tom Esareto was elected by the faculty. He's here tonight. Surely we'll get to know and love Tom as we all have. He is a math teacher here. He is our resident philosopher as well and has been a Nansen teacher eight and a half, nine years, I don't know, a little bit longer than me. He goes back a while. So Tom did will, Tom, I've been meeting together and we'll be filling him in and he'll be ready to start July 1st, if not sooner, you know what I mean. So I also want to speak a little bit about, there's really, I think, been some issues that have been sort of undercurrent among the faculty, I would say, all year long. I think in the beginning of the year, some faculty members were kind of like, it's new, we're going to wait and see. I think at this point in the year, that has bubbled up a little bit more and been become not just a common occurrence, but a bigger issue. I think that the number of faculty members who are, I think we saw in January the results in the faculty survey that we still have some very low numbers. I would say that now it's been a few months, I don't think that those numbers are better. And I think that faculty members are, our patience is running thin. And I think that people, I don't think that, I know that people feel like they've been asked to be patient. They, they have come to Dr. McCleary, they've gone to Ms. O'Connor, Dr. Curry, they've gone to department chairs, they've, they've come to me with, with things and they don't feel like change is happening. I'm going to try and be a little bit more specific. On Tuesday after school, we had a meeting of the faculty. That meeting was run by Steve Smith, who's the union steward. So he provided some overall updates on the contract negotiations. Of course, Kent, he couldn't get into details, but he did provide us with that. He did mention that he felt the tone of the negotiations this year was much, much better than they had been last year and he felt very positive about coming to a positive contract soon. So that was about all we got there. But, and then we sort of had a talk amongst the faculty about some of the issues that are bothering people. I would say that those boiled down, oh, we had a very good turnout at the meeting, I don't know if I mentioned that. I would say probably about 80% of the faculty were at that meeting. One of the things that really helped us have a good turnout, and I think that this is worth noting, if we want the faculty to come and give feedback, although the meeting was an optional meeting, it was held during the time where faculty are required, we, all faculty members have Tuesdays booked, Tuesday afternoons from 3:30 to 4:30 are booked for staff meetings. And so the meeting took place during that time period, although it wasn't required to attend. And I think that when you want to hear from the faculty, you need to use that window. If you have that later at night, or you have it on a different day of the week, people have other commitments. They have daycare issues, or they have sports if they're coaching, or they have, you know, we all have lives, and I know you all know that, you are busy people yourselves. So it was very, very nice to see such a high turnout for the faculty.
Somebody tap dancing.
Perhaps it's the flamenco dances. I think that the biggest issue is, we've been talking about communication over and over again. I'm going to try and, I think that that issue is more about not just communication, but responsiveness to communication. I think faculty members are feeling, they want to know that administration is available to them. There, I, I know that all three, by the big three, I'm going to call them the big three. Dr. McCleary, Dr. Curry, and Ms. O'Connor. They're all new and I, and we understand that, it has taken, I'm sure that it has been an, it's been a very, very difficult task to sort of get everybody up to speed. But there's a sense that because there's so much in-office work that needs to be done, that there's not enough hallway presence, classroom presence, presence at special events, presence just in general. And faculty feel like that the administration is not available to them. Yeah. So availability is one issue. I think also, maybe nobody wants to do this, so they're just going to bang me up, that's okay.
Jess, I don't want to stop you, but it has been five minutes.
It's five minutes, all right. Do you want me to keep going?
No.
Keep going.
I'm just giving you a time check.
All right, yep. When faculty have made, there was, for instance, a big lower school meeting with many of the lower school teachers and administration, they brought forth a lot of their concerns. They don't feel like those, although they felt like at the meeting people listened to them, they don't see change. So they have gone with specific things, we would like to see this, this, and this, they don't see those things happening. And if those things are happening, are going to be happening, they don't, no one is telling them that. So for instance, one of the things that has been suggested is that we, perhaps a newer, another administrative position, a lower school dean, that might help that. And there's sort of been talk about that, people have said that that might be helpful and maybe even necessary. Is that happening? We don't hear that. I think also that leads to people saying, is this changeable? Are we in a situation where this administration is willing to listen to us and say, that's nice, dear, now run along to your room, but that we're not going to see actual change? And if that is true, then people will be probably looking for other positions. And when people have expressed that they might be looking for other positions, they have received feedback that the adminis, that, you know what? We know that people are going to be unhappy. The exact words that were used were that turnover happens. And considering our past history where turnover happened all the time and for some really horrible reasons, that faculty did not feel that was a supportive response. That might have been unintentional, and I'm going to acknowledge that, but I think that there seems to be a sense that administration is not just not listening to faculty, but not really getting what faculty are saying, even when specific concerns are raised. And I would like to also add, I know I've over my time, I don't think that this is universal. There are faculty members who are happy and content here, so I, it's not universal, but the number of faculty members who are feeling this is growing. You want numbers, I know, you guys love numbers. I would guess, the divisions are largely geographic. People who happen to work in this building seem a little less agitated than the people who work in the white building and the lower school building.
Why is that?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that.
No, I would guess. Is that administration in that building?
Dr. Curry is in this building. So I, I don't know that that's it, maybe. I think that's all I have. I don't know if you have a question. Oh, wait, I can also add that Steve Smith and I met up there with McCleary today, actually, to sort of let him know how our faculty meeting went, what new concerns were with people. And Dr. McCleary does seem, I will say, genuinely interested in hearing what these are and, and wants to improve. I think that getting that message out is really where we need to be. The responsiveness, the, it's, it's, it's not bound to lack.
If you'd like to.
Thank you. Move to public comment, Ms. Jessica Hennessy?
Thank you for your time. My name is Jessica Hennessy, and I am the chair of the pack, Special Ed Care and Advisory Council. Those that you've said, now, we are a government body, we are required by law, we represent the interests of students with special needs in this school. We actually report to you. This is my fourth year as chair of the pack. I've come before you previously to highlight the wonderful things happening in this school, to support the services that are, that are special ed guests, and to offer support to anybody possible that we've approached before. One of my favorite things is that it takes a village to raise a community. The school is a critical part of this. Our homework is directly attached to by the daily experiences that happen in this school. I believe in hope that I have a reputation within this school as not being a loss. The last thing anybody, anybody wants to do is call and complain. I believe I take a fair approach with special education issues. I understand that people are human, make mistakes, and wholeheartedly believe that all children will succeed if they are given a comfortable, comprehensive environment. I always have a strong, strong relationship with all levels of the administration in this year. I'll be presenting to you a name on behalf of, on behalf of the pack in a more robust way, but I have some concerns that I felt couldn't wait, and I hope to be addressed. I am increasingly concerned about the lack of experience and knowledge at the administrative level regarding special education. The administration must feel the same way if they acquired a special education consultant to help guide them. While I applaud this effort, my concerns remain and are even somewhat elevated since they are paying the consultant, yet problems continue to occur. Over the last several months, there have been a number of instances where ANSA has been out of compliance with the law. At the beginning of the year, there were several unexpected departures by Mike McIntyre and majority of the special ed staff. We did not file any complaints as we wanted to give the administration opportunity to correct the situation. As the year progressed, we continued to give them the benefit of the doubt when they forgot, they understood, or when they didn't know. However, here it has been, and we get more and more calls from parents frustrated and asking for help. We are not talking about unique situations outside of the norm, we're referring to basic rights, basic laws, and basic cooperation. We have compiled a list of complaints that I did not get filed with DEES on behalf of all specialized students at NISA. There are currently six systemic complaints identified, not completely complaints that myself or other parents complied with visually. Some could result in financial liability to the school as we try to make up for missed services, while I contend others could actually put our license in jeopardy. We prefer not to go this route this time. What we would like is an independent review of the compliance issues, as well as many other challenging areas, in an effort to find a mutually beneficial resolution path forward. We are requesting that Pam Travers be contracted to do this, to the respected educator that has previously led the Dover Sherbrooke School District, as well as been a special education director for the Arlington Public Schools. We would like her to report directly to the board. This may feel extremely commensurate, or perhaps overstretching your role as a board, or as my role as a pack. To help you understand where this comes from, I've relayed a number of statements above and beyond these compliance issues that have been made to myself as the pack chair, to me personally as a parent, or other specialized parents. Statements such as, no one from the administration will attend your meetings, when every meeting for the last three years was attended by the director of student services and/or the executive director. Or later that they would attend a meeting, but only if there was a particular topic to discuss, but not opening for comments or feedback. Or when I was told that we should not expect the same level of support that has been given by our previous special education teachers. Or maybe when a staff member told me that, who had been one of my main contacts, that she was told very specifically she could no longer assist the pack. Lastly, I actually shouldn't say lastly, because this is just a subset, one parent heard from a teacher that they didn't know how to dumb down the tortilla to plumbing needs to a special child, and that they were driving the class down. I found it particularly disgusting and insulting. We request that next professional development day be focused on the differentiation of learning and providing general ed teachers the tools and strategies to use when teaching special education children. We say this because we believe that the friction that this school has taken, or in this last year, is perpetuating the attitude in some parents and staff that special needs kids grant this school down. While we assured our experience not under those words, we believe Dr. McCleary needs to be at an effort to show comfort of our special ed population and that they are well prepared. I would like to remind you that the mission statement of this school is, the advanced naps and family charter school will create an atmosphere of celebration of knowledge for children of all backgrounds and abilities who will excel in all subjects, especially that science and technology. They explicitly say that we will create an atmosphere where children of all abilities will excel. Right now, we are putting up to that anymore. By my latest count, approximately 18% of the special ed population, 91 leading names this year. Eighteen percent. That's impressionable in my eyes. Thank you for your time. I look forward to hearing what my support is, and happy to elaborate if you request. I look forward to my more robust presentation that happens next, and I hope to have more robust comments on that.
Thank you. I will be discussing her request, because she talked to me about it later on. So with that, can we move to the executive director of the board?
So the first thing I wanted to mention is that we've had some small group meetings with faculty who had concerns about trust in the administration. This is something we began at the end of March. We had several meetings over the course of a few weeks. The faculty rep to the board was present as well, and any faculty that wanted to come from the different sections of the school were free to come. We summarized the results, and some of them intersect with what Ms. Bowen has mentioned. For example, being present more in the hallways, I think was one of the things she mentioned, that came up in, in those meetings. Also communicating effectively with the faculty. Questions relating to faculty retention, some going back to the last summer, and then some concerns going forward in relation to retention. So at the following general staff meeting that was held, it's held regularly on Tuesdays, I was asked by one of the faculty members who was at one of those meetings to give a summary of the various points that were brought up, and at that point I did. I think that's the point at which the, I made the statement about the retention, turnover, because someone asked about turnover. My intention there was to, to say that in every school that I've been in, that faculty come and faculty go, there was no intention in any way judging people for their decisions. There was, I think one of the themes that came through in those meetings was that, as Ms. Bowen's already alluded to, that there were some concerns that seemed to focus on the middle school area in particular. So in looking at that, there was a follow-up meeting that was requested by the middle school teachers specifically, and both myself and then Dr. Curry and also Ms. O'Connor went to that meeting. And it was a good opportunity to get feedback. As a result of those meetings, we've decided that we're going to get a dean of students to be specifically focused on the middle school going into next year, and possibly have more even other administrative changes to focus on the needs, specific needs of the middle school. I think that will go some distance toward addressing some of those concerns. And not only the concern of having more presence in the hallways and the various parts of the school during the day, but also helping the administration to be able to take care of the other. I think the mention was made of office work that had to be done, maybe keeping people from being more present in the school. There was also some concern about what happens in the school lunch periods, particularly in the middle school. We think the dean of students will help largely in that area as well. I think there's more that can be done, of course, in terms of communication, communicating things effectively, and we're working on that. We did institute the monthly newsletter and we have the monthly coffees with the parents. We're trying to be responsive to their, their desire to have more timely and detailed communication. The attempt to have the meetings with the faculty was also, that, the special meetings was an attempt to respond to the need for more communication as well, but I think can always improve on that. I guess one other factor I should mention that plays, that has an effect on faculty turnover is, of course, the negotiation that's ongoing for the, for the faculty compensation for next year, which of course has not been finalized. But my understanding is that's, based on my discussions with Ms. Bowen and Mr. Smith, that that's, that's ongoing and it seems to be going reasonably well. Another element of getting feedback, at least, is the family survey. That's being done by the Panorama organization, which is a professional educational surveying organization. The board asked me to work with a number of board members, Mr. Rick Kamhal and the parent rep, Ms. Saul, on picking out the various categories that we would include in that survey. We were trying to make sure that it would be a manageable number of questions, so we settled on about 50 questions. And then, based on the feedback I received from the two board members, we picked from a range of possibilities, we settled on questions that had to do with school climate, the student experience, the parent experience. We did come to the conclusion in, in working with Panorama that it would be best to start out by asking for feedback on the oldest student, rather than having every single student. That was their advice. Our hope is that we'll get a sort of a baseline, then we'll be able to revisit it and get some data going forward. There was also a place on the survey for some open responses about what you think is going well at the school and what you think could be improved. There's an opportunity for people to give that kind of feedback as well. Should also probably mention that the college acceptances are, are coming in and they're looking very, very good. We've gotten students accepted to some very prestigious schools, and I think, I've been told, of course, I haven't been here as long as many others, but I've been told that the acceptances this year are very, very good in comparison to the past. But be, be more on that, I think, in the next, the next meeting, but that's in the process right now. Another thing I should mention regarding the attempts to have better communication with faculty and better responsiveness is that the, the school has been working to hire a full-time HR manager, and that's ongoing. I'm hoping we'll be able to come to a conclusion there before too long. But we're just trying to be very diligent and we have the help of some outside agencies helping us look for a professional HR person.
I think now is probably the best time to talk briefly about the family survey. I know there were concerns about that, and maybe Rick and Liz, you could share your thoughts.
Is the survey in the field now?
Yeah.
Yes, the survey was sent out last week, and there's a two-week window, I believe, roughly. I think it's the first week in May that it closes. But I'm told by the survey people that they've already received more than twenty percent response, which they tell me is very good to have that in the first week. Sent out to the family, all the families, so seven hundred some.
So I know when we looked at, when we moved to Panorama, we made that choice last year. So last year was the first time. This is actually the first family survey to be conducted by Panorama. The faculty survey went out last spring. I know places involved with that. But because it was new to try to roll out using Panorama, the choice was made at that time not to do family survey. So we actually hadn't done family survey for a whole year. So I knew it was definitely interesting getting that.
Just, I guess, a couple of comments. One is, as Dr. McCleary mentioned, we were involved with picking the general topics of the survey, categories of the survey, and I believe, I'm assuming, all the questions within that topic were distributed. I would just reiterate, I understand, Liz, you've heard some feedback from some parents in terms of the questions and the ratings, though I guess I would just state that that, those were standard rating levels, if you will.
Right. We didn't have control of that. I would say, though, I was disappointed with the quality of the questions, and, you know, maybe, maybe I should have put a halt to it. I don't know. I don't feel like I was empowered to do that. But having done engagement surveys in the corporate world, I think the quality of the questions were poor. I mean, I think that we did the best to select the categories we could, but, I mean, I think that it only, I would ask the board what your expectations were for the survey, because I think it only looks at one aspect of the school, which is the education, which obviously is the primary driver. But were you expecting anything else above and beyond that? Because that, there was nothing, there was no opportunity to really ask, or to really convey another message, I guess.
I thought part of the reason that we use Panorama is because these are the same questions that they use in lots of other places, and we're going to be able to get some benchmarking information from other places.
I would love to go out to those other schools and see how they find the survey, because, as I said, from a corporate perspective, which is where my survey experience has been, I just didn't feel like the quality of the questions were that great.
So the quality of the questions were, was not...
Well, the quality of the category, I guess.
The questions were not on tone. But the reason why I think that in general...
What do you mean by on tone?
I'd like to explain that. So I think in general, when Panorama goes out to schools, most, most parents, most schools, their challenge is happening in the classroom. And so the experience of the child in the classroom with the teacher is that primary And some of the issues around communication and so forth probably aren't really high on the list in most schools. Unfortunately, at AMSA, it's almost the reverse. What's going on in the classroom is very good. The teachers do a great job. And so the, you know, there are, you know, there are probably some specific issues, particularly as we've just heard, around special education. But in general, I think, you know, the population views of what's going on in the classroom as being pretty darn good, and we have lots of indicators for that. On the other hand, some of the things that other schools probably don't have a problem with around communications and so forth, we historically do have. And so to have picked those questions, for Panorama to come and say, "Here are the questions we would offer up to you," I would say probably most schools would look at those questions and say, "They're good." But what just baffles me is why, you know, if you take a look at those questions, your immediate reaction is, "These questions are not going to get at the difficulty, the challenges that we have as a community at AMSA." They will not. And for parents to go through and be asked a bunch of questions about things that are not a problem and not be asked, it's like driving down the car, it's like driving in a car down the road and having something tell you your spark plugs are working, but not having a gas gauge that tells you you're about to run out of gas. So you sit there and you say, "Well, you know, we ask questions because spark plugs are important." Yes, they are, absolutely. But meanwhile, we ran out of gasoline, so we used the wrong indicator. We used the wrong thing on the dashboard, because we didn't step back and say, "What do we as a community want to get, what do we as a board want to get out of this survey?"
I think the same thing you said as the faculty survey, too. I've heard similar questions, I've heard similarly complaints from the faculty survey as well. That's not what I wanted to answer. That's not what I need to tell you about what's going on. So maybe a question that needs to be on the table is, is Panorama the right vehicle for us?
So I think, what I'm trying to emphasize here is I don't think Panorama is the problem. I think Panorama probably has good information, good questions and so forth. It is our duty to go in and say, "Here are the topics we want to see. We'd like to see the questions. Do these questions get at the challenges that we want to get information about? If yes, proceed. If no, well, jeez, maybe we ought to go back and say, you know, we need a different set of questions." I don't think the problem is Panorama. I think the problem is...
Panorama's questions.
Yeah.
Do we not look at it in a format? Did we do that? Do we look at...
Do we look at the questions?
Yes.
We look at the specific questions.
I went through question by question in hopes of getting some of the issues to bubble up around, you know, what has come up through the year.
And you said, and you said you were concerned...
Yeah.
And yet you didn't feel empowered to raise the...
I didn't feel empowered to stop the survey, no.
Yeah, well, that's unfortunate.
I thought one of the selling points of Panorama was that we could use their stock questions, and in addition, we could put our own questions.
Yes.
But that doesn't give us the benchmarking things, but maybe that's more important to us than benchmarking.
Were there scales that we chose not to include?
There were something on the order of ten to twelve different categories.
Right.
And so I sent those to Mr. Kamal and Ms. Saul, and the response I got, feedback, was that we should pick six or seven in this order, and that's the ones that I sent to Panorama and said, "Okay, use these, use these categories." And I think, you know, as I mentioned, climate, student experience, parent experience. There were a couple of open response about something that's not going well at the school, something that is going well at the school. Questions about your child specifically, what grade are they in, you know, demographic questions that they include in surveys. So there's about fifty questions. And again, these people, they do this as a, this is their profession, and it's run by, you know, it's headed up by a professional person, an educator who has advanced degrees.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, I know they have, having looked at their stuff last year, they have different scales to measure different things, and we pick the ones that we think are the most useful to us. Were there scales they got at these things that Liz and Karen are complaining about, that we just, for whatever reason, we happen not to choose them?
So if I can comment on kind of my thought processes going through this, I feel like of the categories, those categories were closest to, they were broad, they touched on various things, and I felt they were the most relevant if we were going to limit the number of questions, again, in a reasonable sense of parent feedback. Unfortunately, I'm not an expert in the survey.
I'm not either, yeah.
No, I would, actually, I would, I would challenge that. You actually, I think, do have expertise in that. From conversations and so forth, I think you do have expertise in engagement surveys. And your, and your intuition told you that this was not the right direction, and we should have followed that intuition. Okay?
Personally, I was, I'm not an expert.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm probably not.
Just follows me what Ken did.
But I deferred to Panorama's judgment on those questions. Maybe it's wrong, but I did, feeling that while this has been used at a national level, they're also benchmarked, then it's better, it's certainly going to be a better question than I'm going to be able to judge.
I would suggest that since seven hundred some families got the survey, that when we get the results back, see what kind of responses they give. If somebody says in the open response, "I don't think this survey got to the heart of what I wanted to talk about," then that would be valuable feedback, wouldn't it?
And if I can comment on that, I was glad that we intentionally left open responses, because I think the intermediate survey we did, we did not have that. And I felt also that we'll catch stuff, because parents have an opportunity to comment on anything in open response.
Yeah.
Sounds like Panorama's more concerned about the quality of the education.
Well, I think they're an educational survey company. They talk about, I can't recall all fifty questions, but, you know, questions talked about, "What is your experience with administration? What is your, is your, what is your experience with your child's teacher? What is your child's experience with your teacher? What is your child's experience with other students?"
I think it's a mistake to blame Panorama in here, okay? I looked at the question, and I didn't look at these questions and say, "These are bad questions." What I thought is, these are not the questions that get at the challenges that we're facing. They're talking about what's going on in the classroom, which is largely okay here at AMSA, and it doesn't get at some of the things. That's why I say, we're sitting here looking at, you know, we're looking at a dial that tells us our spark plugs are working, and we're not looking at a dial that tells us we're about to run out of gas.
Well, I got to totally disagree with you there, Ken, because it seems to me that what's going on in the classroom is clearly the tank of gas. That's the most important thing that we've got going on here. Our test results, schools that our kids are getting into, the experience that they're having, that's what this place is about. And if we're grumpy that we don't get, you know, handholding from the administration in the form of communication, and our kids are still getting education in the classroom, that seems to me to be the most important gauge on the dashboard.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you voiced that perspective. I think there are people who have other perspectives, that they don't share that one.
And God bless us that they do. So this thing is out in the field, and as Dr. McCleary said, we're going to get it back. We've been alerted that there's a problem, that there's a proceed problem. We're going to see some results, and then I think that will be the time for us to have this conversation again and to decide. We chose Panorama because we wanted a standard tool. We realized that by doing that, you're sacrificing some customization. That was a choice we made. Perhaps it was the wrong choice. When we get the answers back, I think, and we have the results in front of us, and then we have this conversation again with what people told us, with what Liz is hearing that maybe they didn't tell us, and then I think it's time for us to look at it again and say, "All right, you know, let's reexamine that decision and decide what's the more important thing to do now." I don't think, other than, you know, understanding where we're all coming from, an extended discussion now isn't going to get us anywhere.
Is there, are there open responses at the end of each section?
No. There were just a couple of open response questions at the end.
Yeah, we know. Wait, like, the board, can you get that?
We will get that. We will get the...
We'll get the results.
No, can we actually get the questions?
Sure.
Can you send it to us?
I don't know, is that possible?
I copy the question, so I'm glad to send them out.
Yeah, I can, too, yeah.
We'll get the results, we'll get the questions. That's what we have in the faculty survey.
Yeah, but he's asking for it now. I mean, if Liz, you're willing to send a copy around the questions to the full board, then if you take that action, that would be great.
So just one comment. So I think we have a plan in terms of, let's see the results and then, and make an assessment there. We are running about ten minutes past where we should be, so.
All right, so let me move on then. So we do have a plan to finish that. Liz will send out the questions, and we will discuss this in May when we also have the survey results, and we can take action at that time. The first thing under chair business is a complaint update. This has to do with the complaint about enrollment policy that was assigned to Evan Rick. So Evan, do you have an update on this?
So from a board perspective, I think this one is still pretty much on hold. DEES has responded. Dr. McCleary received your forwarding on the DEES response, and I believe you've been in contact or been trying to reach the individual. Is there any, from your perspective, has there been any further communication regarding the DEES response to the individual or family?
No, I did speak with, I did speak with the individual's wife recently, and she relayed the message. She said she was going to have her husband call her, but hasn't called me yet. But the response, he's, he's in receipt of the response from the Department of Ed, which indicates that the school followed all the procedures, and they don't see a problem.
And from my read of it, it's that the focus of DEES was not to adjudicate whether we made a proper decision or not, but did we follow the policies that the school has in place? And from their standpoint, yes, we followed those policies that we have in place.
Well, they, their decision was not only did the school, whether the school followed the policies it has in place, but whether it followed the policies that the Department of Ed holds the schools to in terms of how they determine you should be admitted and you shouldn't. And in this, in a charter school like this, your eligibility for admission is on a tier, sort of steps. You know, if you live in Marlborough, obviously you have an advantage over somebody who doesn't. If you live in Clinton or Maynard or, you know, Hudson. But in this case, that's what it turned on, whether or not somebody actually was taking, trying to, what they call gain the system.
So that remains on hold from a board perspective, right? Ken, can you provide an update on the regional issues task force?
So, so I don't have a whole lot to, to report, but I do have a sort of an outline and then a question. And so, so I started laying out a process, you know, in terms of what we would need to do to go through this. So again, if you recall, this regional issues task force had to do with the experience of parents and students who do not reside in Marlborough, but in Hudson, Maynard, or Clinton. And I think by extension, we should look more broadly across other student groups as well. But again, the point that I think I tried, I tried to make is that we have a charter responsibility to serve the needs of students from all four core towns. And I'm open to the fact, to the likelihood that some of these issues, when they're addressed, may help students from non-core towns as well. But any case, I think there's a couple of steps laying out here, one of which would be to establish membership, to do some initial data gathering. So data gathering, for example, would be, you know, in terms of numbers of students from the various towns and, and application rates, enrollment rates, and things like that. Then do some surveying as part of that data gathering, some informal survey to feed into perhaps a more formal process that then might feed into some focus groups where we would gather some information, not only about what some of the issues are in terms of themes, but also prospective solutions that might be offered up, and then develop a set of recommendations. I hoped that we'd be able to sort of, you know, saddle on to the family survey, but the family survey's already gone out, and so that's not happening. But it would be good to try to get this, this started before the summer so that we could use the summer to do some of the crunching and development of themes and so forth, perhaps with the aim of having a set of recommendations by next fall. We may also be able to offer some interim recommendations that feed into the new sixth graders coming in and so forth, but I would like to get the process started. So the, so that's sort of the laying out of the process. The question I had is to, one, obviously, I'm the only one so far, I think, that's been identified. I don't know if you've thought about other people to...
Yeah, I'm on it.
Yeah, right. Anybody else? Is it, is it just going to be the two of us?
From the board, you are welcome to add others.
So the second one was, the second one, second point is, and perhaps more importantly, in light of outlining this, whether this sort of meets the expectations of the board. I don't want to sit here and start going... I don't want to sit here and start going, I don't want us to go down in this direction. If this outline of steps, in terms of data gathering, developing of themes and solutions with a set of recommendations, if that's not the direction that we want as a board, that's, you know, that's sort of the recommendation at this point, or recommended steps. But I did want to check in with the board before we did that. I guess the other thing is, is I just wanted to alert Dr. McLeary that we're going to need some staff support in terms of data gathering, and we'll feed those requests through you, obviously.
So, you guys haven't met, then? Like, this task force?
The board, the task force, no, no.
So this is kind of just your...
Initial, yep.
Thought process?
Yeah.
So, I mean, my suggestion would be, maybe you guys should meet and come together.
Well, so clearly, that's it. But I also want to check in with the board and make sure that the board is seeing this as the right direction to go. So that's why I want to check in with the board.
I mean, I would, I would think the task force should meet to see if that should be the right direction, we work closely forward. Do you know what I'm saying?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Meet, they're going to talk, they're going to gather data, they're going to consider solutions, and they're going to make recommendations.
Okay. So that's the update I had. So as pointed out, we have not gathered together members, and so we'll get started in that direction.
So I just wanted to add that on board goals for this year, we did identify this as a goal, and we actually had December as the timeline. So it is, I think there was a recognition, we talked about this in January, that it was going to take less than, yeah, less than time.
Right.
So.
Okay, that's what I had.
If you think about it by September, that'd be great, but I don't, I think that it's probably better to do this in a robust fashion than try to rush the timeline.
Right, thank you.
Other Chair Business, I just wanted to make a note that because of discussions with Ms. Hattie, that she...
She just stepped out, so maybe you want to hold that thought?
No, because she knows what I'm going to say.
Okay.
That I'm going to ask the Governance Committee, actually, to look at how to, how we should be addressing, how we as a board should be addressing this issue. And so if we could put this on the next, on the May Governance Committee agenda, to talk about CPAC compliance issues.
This is regarding the special ed concerns.
Okay, that's it. So we will move on to our committee updates. And first up is Tom, who has 30 minutes to talk.
All right. Okay, so I preface this by saying that the school obviously put a lot of time into putting this year's budget together. Dr. Curry worked with each of the department heads, doing a very robust bottoms-up budget. Then they worked with Dr. McLeary and our intern business manager, you know, to put all of this together. So I think they've done a good job, and I will, you know, share the highlights with folks at this point in time. What we've got here, just for comparison purposes, is we've got a, our first column here, I should point her out, but our first column here is our proposed 2016-2017 budget that would cover the period July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The next column is showing where we project to be for the year that we're currently in, so the year ending June 30, 2016. The next column shows you what the budget for this year was, and then the next column shows you the actuals for the July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 calendar year. So you've basically got three years laid out for you here to look at. It all begins with our tuition, as we talked about, by far, you know, this is the largest component of our income. This is very formulaic-driven. Depending on where our students are coming from, is the reimbursement rate that we get from the state. We've taken a look at what we think our enrollment for next year is going to be, based on, you know, the students that we currently have, seniors that are leaving, people that are going to be joining us, looked at the reimbursement rates that are out there on the DEES website, and arrived at a tuition number here of $12.7, which is up from where we believe we're going to end this year, and actually up from July 14-June 15 year. This is the best information that we, you know, we have at this point in time about what our tuition is going to look like.
Tom, what drives variance here?
It really comes down to the students that we have and the grades that they're in, is what, you know, is what drives the variance. I mean, we don't, you know, we don't set the reimbursement rates. The reimbursement rates are, Shrewsbury is sending us 10 kids in the middle school and 15 kids in the high school, and the reimbursement rate for them is X based on what Shrewsbury is paying, you know, paying for their kids at that point in time. And that's all driven off of estimates initially as well, and then it all, you know, then it all gets trued up as the year progresses. So law of large numbers says we shouldn't have the dramatic swings that, you know, that we've seen, but that's where we're at at this point in time.
Hey, Tom?
Yes, sir.
That, it's interesting though, right? Because I think our hypothesis was that as we enrolled more students from our core towns, that the tuition budget was going to be going down. So were you surprised to see this number come out, and is it, were we just off on that?
We were off on that, you know, we were off on that hypothesis. So the analysis that we did is looked at the reimbursement rates from every town that is sending students to us, and it turns out that the core towns, on average, are actually a higher reimbursement rate than the non-core towns, which was, you know, a little bit counter to what we were expecting. But that's what, you know, that's what the numbers say at this point in time.
Tom, can I ask, why does it, I am, why does it, like, adjust throughout the year? Like, the tuition reimbursement payments, like, the Shrewsbury's, they were going to pay you this much per month in October, and then a different amount in April? Because that, because that, could you predict, why has it changed during the year, isn't it?
There are multiple, there are multiple components that go into the reimbursement rate. So some of it is based on a peer pupil number that DEES comes up with, some of it is based on construction spend that the school districts have, which is seen as a one-off type expense, and that filters through a formula. Some of it is based on our pre-enrollment numbers and then our actual enrollment numbers. So there's a lot of moving pieces to it. But in general, this is our belief where we're going to end up, you know, based on all the numbers that we've got at this point in time. This is the best estimate that we can make at this point in time.
But the numbers do change during the year. I mean, DEES will give off less.
People come to us.
Any other questions on the tuition number?
Down to the second line.
It gets easier as we go forward. Grants and donations, this is really, this should really be titled grants, but these are our entitlement grants. Again, these are driven off of our, the population of students that we have is what drives this. This is an estimate at this point in time of what we think we're going to get. This has actually been a pretty consistent number year over year, so we feel pretty good about this number. Again, even if we missed this number tremendously, this number is, you know, 1% of the tuition number for the, you know, the sake of argument, but we feel pretty good about the number that we've got there. This next number here, this is all on Chris O'Keefe's shoulders, no. This next number here represents, you know, our annual giving campaign. We are putting in an estimate of $40,000, and then just, you know, additional things that we may or may not pick up throughout the year, if we're able to secure some funding from, you know, a corporation or something like that. This number unfortunately has been, you know, trending down over the last several years. It is, you know, it is what it is, but that's what we're, you know, we're budgeting at this point in time.
Now, it also bounces around a little bit, so it's not as, you know, easily predicted, but the trend has been down recently. Do we, I mean, I think this money is important because it provides, you know, part of the basics of our budget. And do we want to contemplate at some point, saying, "All right, we have the annual campaign." Right now, this says, "We have the annual campaign, and this is what we think we're going to do."
Yep.
Doesn't really say, "This is what we're determined to do," and if the annual campaign doesn't do it, then we're going to go elsewhere, do other things, find other ways.
You know, again, I'd look for direction from you. I'll simply do the math on this, and, you know, to keep it simple, this is $40 per student is what we're, you know, is what we're getting here. And, you know, people have to decide where they want to spend their charitable giving, but $40 per student does not strike me as, we're striking the right chord with people to have them value the additional things that money coming to AMSA could do. It's really a disappointing number, is what I think it is. In the past, we've also secured more funding, you know, from corporations and things like that, for whatever reason. You know, we haven't, we haven't seen that coming through at the, you know, at the same extent that it has in the past. So I don't want to tell you how, you know, what you should be doing with the Fundraising Development Committee, but I think that there's certainly opportunities to, you know, to increase this number.
And I think it's not really solely at the feet of the, of the fundraising committee. It's a question of, do we have, or do we want to create a culture of philanthropy in this school? Because in people that I've spoken to, some people get it, and some people don't. Some people say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we should give, we should support it, this is special." Some people say, "Huh? It's a public school. You know, I pay taxes, I pay for the bus." And, you know, it's a, it's a whole board. If we're serious about making the number, I don't think it's just send two directors and a couple of outside volunteers a way to do it. It's, you know, we need to spend more time as a board on what we really mean about fundraising, and what we really expect of each other, and how we want to drive it.
That's a very helpful number, Tom, $40 per family or student. What did you say?
It's really $40 per student, if you want, you know.
I find that a lie. I haven't heard of those terms before.
Yeah, I think that kind of says it all.
I paid...
That may find its way into a field letter very soon.
There you go.
And it's actually less than that per family.
I paid more than $40 to spend my business.
Well, I mean, we do, we do have other fees, you know, let's acknowledge that we have, do have other fees, and people do have other things that they can do with their charitable dollar. Personally, I think it's worth more than, you know, $40, you know, $40 per kid, on average, right? Maybe not everybody can do $40 for their reasons, but I think on average, that's, that's a pretty low bar that we're at right now. And unfortunately, it's been trending down.
I spent narrow loans for about a hundred bucks a year.
Investment income, this is really just interest on the money that we have, nothing too exciting there. Miscellaneous income, nothing too exciting there. If we come down to nutrition programs, we're forecasting at the same rate as we believe we're going to end up this year. And again, this, this is a number that's strictly driven by the number of people that are buying lunch, and you're going to see a corresponding number down below on nutrition expense. If we mess this number up, and we have a lot less lunches coming in, we're going to pay for a lot less lunches. If we got a lot more lunch money coming in, we're going to have a lot more lunches. It takes care of itself. So the best estimate is really just what we think we're going to end up on this year, and not to lose a lot of sleep over it one way or another. Student program income comes through a variety of different places. You know, our clubs bring in quite a bit of money at this point in time. I think there was some commentary on clubs earlier. You know, if, if the school has criteria for running a club, there has to be somebody that's interested in a club, then there have to be enough people that are interested in participating in a club, and then it needs to be priced accordingly. But, you know, if all three of those criteria are met, I'm not aware of, you know, any clubs that are being denied or anything like that. I don't, I don't know if you'd like to comment further on that, Dr. McLeary, but it's a, it's a pretty straightforward process as to, you know, what's going on with the clubs. We're looking for them to generally be, you know, self-sustaining. They have to appeal to a certain, you know, minimum, you know, number of students, and that's, that's really the only criteria that's out there.
Yeah, they have, they align with the school's charter and mission. There's a minimum number to be able to run it, so I think it's 10 to 12 students. And, yeah, there's a need for an advisor, and the advisor has certain responsibilities.
Testing and assessment number, this relates to the number of AP tests that we give, PSAT tests and things like that that flow through here. This number is coming down dramatically from what we're projecting this year, but we're pretty confident in the number, you know, the number that we've got there. And again, this is one of those self-correcting number, you know, numbers as well. If we have more tests, we're going to have more income. So I'm not going to lose a lot of sleep over that. We've got an income number here for the prom, we have an expense number for the prom. The school has been subsidizing the prom since really, you know, our inception. The school has been subsidizing the prom, and that's something that we're contemplating doing in the coming year. But directionally, I think we're asking the school to look at whether that can become more of a self-funding activity. Homework and media club, again, budgeting very consistent with where we were last year. Field trips, field trips are down. One of the reasons that field trips are down is the cancellation of Project Adventure. That was a very costly field trip that we had contemplated in this year's, in the July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016 budget that was subsequently canceled. That's why the projection is down. So we're actually projecting that we're going to have more field trips this coming year than in our current year, but just modestly so. Senior activities, again, that's money raised from dress-down days and things like that, and then the corresponding expense goes to pay for cap and gowns and graduation and things like that. Then we receive some income, the student programs, income other through planners. I actually skipped over it, and I'm sorry I did. I'd like to highlight the student store. So I think, as everyone knows at this point in time, student store was closed. We've got the new uniform policy rolling out. Things aren't going to be sold through the student store, they're going to be sold outside of that. So that is not an area that we're budgeting any income for in the coming year. Okay? Athletic program income, I want to focus on the athletic program income. We'll focus on the expense, and I also want to show a summary here. So the athletic program income, we took a look at, we will be offering, I believe, all the same sports that we're offering this year, and I believe we're contemplating a couple of additions as well. The school's also contemplating a modest increase in the fees, about a 3% increase from $300 to $310,000. I just want to highlight...
$310,000.
Yes, $310,000. First to, first to...
I want to go on the record, it's not $300,000.
I want to support Dr., I want to support Dr. McLeary and his support of athletics. So what we put together here is to try to give a picture, and this does not capture every single athletic expense, it doesn't capture insurance and things like that, but it captures the big caption expenses. So I want people to actually be able to see, you know, what we're seeing from a 2015-16 perspective, what we're budgeting for the coming year. So income from athletics, we're looking at, again, $220,000 coming in. If you look at the expenses going out, equipment, uniforms, paying for referees to come in and referee our games and things like that. Our four kicks expense, this is a four kicks expense independent of PE, so this is to use the fields for athletics and things like that. That's the number that we pay there. It's a number that someday, if we were in a different facility situation, maybe we wouldn't be writing that check to four kicks, but at this point in time, we need to write that check to four kicks. A salary number here, so all the coaches and things like that, the salary number that goes into there, and then the transportation expense for all of, you know, taking people to away games, taking people to practices and things like that. So you end up with an expense number of $357. The bottom line on that is, you know, our athletics program for next year, we're projecting a loss of $135,000 on the athletics program. So I want, I want people to understand that number, I want people to be aware of that number, and I think that shows that, you know, the school does support athletics at the, you know, at the end of the day, but...
So, we actually, we have spent $189,000 more than we budgeted this year?
No, not more than we budgeted. This is not more than we budgeted. This is the income, and this is the expenses.
More than we collect.
We spend more than we collect. We consciously made a decision that athletics are important to the school. We've consistently consciously made a decision that athletics are important to the school, and continue to spend more than we take in in revenue. That's what they're saying.
So that's your fees, correct?
So we've spent $9,000 more?
We have spent...
I'm only looking at this year, not the 189,000.
In this year, we're projecting that we're going to spend $190,000 more in expenses related to our athletic programs, our extracurricular athletic programs, than the income that we're going to take in.
So we got $181,000 in fees at the top, and we spent $371,000.
Okay, so I thought that's what I said. So we spent $189,000 more than we budgeted this year?
No, it's not more than, it's not more than we budgeted. It's not more than we budgeted. We knew that athletics were going to cost us money.
What did we budget?
This is, this is what we budgeted. We're in line, we're in line with the budget. The point is that expenses are in excess of income. That's, that's what...
You anticipated a loss in budget.
When we get money from towns, though, like, some towns, it's, that's a little different. This is just fees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying or...
Well, I mean, there are some towns that might not even charge fees and have athletics.
That's right.
So...
Okay, right. Our number, our number is not zero. If our number was not zero, we would spend 371,194 more on athletics than we take in. Instead, we charge a fee at this point in time and we, you know, we have this $189,000 number.
All I'm saying is, in some, the taxes, it's looked as a whole. This is actually additional through fees that increases that revenue.
Jessica, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, I did. We're deficit spending, I need to, I, I.
There you go.
We're deficit spending, and next year we're gonna be still deficit spending, but less deficit.
Well, we're choosing to subsidize though.
Yeah.
Programs are deficit spending.
Yeah, I know, I teach government though, so I have, helps me to sort of deficit.
We are deficit, we're deficit spending, yes.
So I think, for me, this is really helpful because I guess I don't hardly seem this broken out like this for athletics. And I've heard, or I've listened to a number of sort of disgruntled parents relative to the fees that they're paying, increases from prior years, and where is the money going? And so I'm thinking about our sort of focus on improving communication, and is there some way that we could get this information out, you know, whether it's redacted or not, I don't know, but whether it's through, of this public information, okay?
Well, it's published now.
So whether it's through the newsletter that we have, but is some way to get this out to a broader community? Because I think this is very helpful in explaining that we actually are subsidizing our athletic activities by internal.
I was interviewed by the school newspaper a couple, well, about four weeks ago, and I pointed this out, that we're subsidizing the athletic program, that we, you know, we lose a significant amount, if you wanna call it that, we lose a certain amount. We support it, and this year we actually increased the number of offerings as well. So that.
I, I think that's helpful. I also think the detail here, if we could include that, I think would be, since the public information, I think then it gives people the actual numbers so they can see, you know, for.
Again, there's no reason that this can't be shared further. I mean, it's shared now, it'll be on, it'll be on the web, it'll be on the website at this point, so.
On the website.
But I, I thought it was important that we focus on, you know, focus on this because the very reason that you, you know, you're talking about having.
Yeah. So maybe, let me just say, if, if it's on the website, maybe we, in a newsletter, we direct people to that website? If you'd like more detail around our athletics, please see so-and-so website so that, because otherwise they're probably not gonna just naturally go to.
No, I, I point people to it when I, whenever the questions come in to me, well, why is the athletic, why does the fee for athletics increase? I point out, well, it's increased $25 in the last two, two or three years, I believe, in 275 to 300. There's gonna be a modest increase next year, but the, the actual cost of the athletics is, is far greater than what we actually cover in the fees. And I've said that to everybody that asks me, both at the parent coffees, I talk about that. And we talked about questions that come up with that.
Yeah, I just think anything we can do that puts it in writing directs people to it is helpful.
And to go up a level, I mean, I think the, the policy, you know, consideration, there is that we spend, is that we subsidize a third of the cost or other, and from school revenues, tends to thirdly in different fees.
I think whether we don't lose money as much as we gain spirit.
There you go. We're making an investment in spirit. I, I think the point is that the school understands that athletics are important, and I hope that this goes a long way to dispelling the idea that the school doesn't think that athletics are important, because I think they're voting with a sizable, you know, chunk of the budget. So again, if we, if we wanna, let's remember, let's remember 136 for just one second here. You know, we only get 12 million seven in, so we're taking 1% of that to make our athletic programs one and not ask, you know, the parents and the students to, you know, to support it. So we could decide whether that's the best use or not. Yep, thanks.